Shall we go?
Yeah, I'll hit live.
All right, here we go. Uh, good evening, councilors, community of Stateon. It is seven o'clock on the fifth of April twenty twenty-one, a meeting of the State and City Council. And do we have any public comment tonight?
No, Mayor, we did not receive any requests to provide comment tonight.
So the first start to see if everyone, everyone's checked in.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we've got a big forum, staff is all here.
Yes.
Let's go to a consent agenda, the first thing to do tonight. And it is for March fifteenth. And would you folks like to do something with that, I hope?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Hook, would you like to lead the charge on the consent agenda tonight?
Sure, I didn't see that Counselor Ort was trying to pop in there. Um, I would like to move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, thank you. Hello, Counselor Ort. Uh, so we've got a motion and a second. Would you poll the council on that, please? Alyssa?
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
And Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed five to zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, under gen, we don't have a public hearing, so under general business, State and Library presentation. And our library director, Jenna Moser, would you just go ahead and, and start with your presentation?
In just a second, I'm gonna share my screen with you guys.
All right.
What's happening at the library, there we go, okay.
Very fancy. So I just thought tonight would be a good night to talk to you and give you an update on what's happening at the library. So during this time when our building's been closed, library staff have adapted all of our services and how we provide them to our community. As well as developing new and incorporating new services that we plan on providing even after the pandemic is over. So let's start with curbside pickup. Now I gotta move your guys' heads on my screen. So this is what curbside pickup looks like. So that is the front desk of the library with one day's worth of holds from our library as well as from other libraries in the cooperative. That we are working on getting checked in. And then this is the second piece of that. So on the right-hand side, you see, um, holds that are now alphabetical by, um, people's names as well as one day's worth of curbside bags packed for appointments. So the library is doing curbside service every ten minutes, Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. As well as accommodating people who, um, can't, who's schedule doesn't incorporate into ours, um, individually. So people who, um, that doesn't work for them or they're only in town on certain days, um, accommodating them as well. So last month in March, we did over seven hundred curbside appointments and checked out seven thousand items to our public. Which, um, for the second month in a row is, um, almost double our closest comparables and, um, more than Salem Public Library. So, um, it is an immense service that is, um, continuing to grow. And when you look at those pictures, I kinda want you guys to remember that in January, we lost three staff positions. And two more of our staff got their hours cut pretty significantly. So it's more with less people. The next thing I wanna talk to you is about, um, storytime. So we're currently providing a live storytime via Zoom every Tuesday morning at ten. And then our staff is also preparing an on, an accompanying online, um, option. So that families whose kids are going to school or whose schedules are really busy can follow along and use those resources at their own pace. We've seen, um, our content on our YouTube channel get a lot of use that way as families try to work in those skills and build in that early literacy time with their children at their own pace as well as, um, using new services. So, um, Jennifer created with the help of S C T C, the State and Storyline. So families can call that number any day, anytime and have a story read to them by one of our library staff. She was, um, actually written up in a statewide blog about children's services because of that. And that's one of those services that I don't think we would have ever thought of except during this time. And it's something that we'll continue to provide. So if you call that storyline in the month of April, you'll get a poem, cause it's National Poetry Month. And so library staff are taking turns reading poems into that. So, um, you guys might wanna check that out. We're also providing take and make kits for all ages. So on Saturday, we gave out, um, over two hundred take and make kits to the community. They're, um, projects for kids, teens, and adults. The kids' projects typically have one that's more STEM-based, so, and then one that's, sorry, more art-based. So this month, we also did a family, a family project, kind of to celebrate Earth Day. So we did, um, seed bombs that can be done as a family project. So we were very fortunate to have grant money to be able to continue to provide these through the end of the year or through the end of, till, till June. Um, they're very popular and, um, we provide them through, uh, drive-through pickup. So this is what it looks like. The first Saturday of the month, in front, on the side, I was gonna say in front of the library, but on the side of the library, by the meeting room. And this is what those results of those look like. So, um, those are finished projects or projects in progress that they're working on. So, um, I think those projects make a big difference in our community. It's another way for us to provide the programming that we'd be, would usually provide in a different method. And, um, we've had tremendous positive feedback on those. Then our big piece that has to look a lot different right now is how we help people browse for books. So, um, we are pretty much open to all kinds of crazy ideas at the library. So we are working individually with patrons to help them do customized lists or surprise bags. Or, um, suggestions for authors that they might try. For kids, um, we're doing a monthly book bistro program where kids get a, like a tasting of a different kind of genre in a chapter book to try. As well as cards to rate them and, um, and a, and some extras as well as a, a sheet for parents that says, remember it's a tasting and we want them to have fun with this and explore. So don't make them read it like homework if they don't like it. And then, um, we're also all in on, um, crazy phone experiments. So I've used my cellphone and read titles off a shelf to patrons on the phone. We've had people call and say, hey, I want ten inspirational fiction books and I'm totally done with the Amish. Can you pick ten for me? Um, we're all in on how we can make that work for them because we know that's one place where it's gonna look a little different for right now. And then these are the other services that we're providing. So we, with the help of S C T C, we were able to pump our Wi-Fi all the way out to the parking lot. You can easily get it almost out to the reader board. And then, um, we provide printing and scanning for people all of the time. And then as part of C C R L S and in cooperation with the college, we were able to get ten hotspots as part of the grant that the cooperative won. And so, um, those hotspots, we got them processed the week before the ice storm. Which was very convenient as we spent a long week trying to help people get reconnected to the internet and to school. And those, um, the timing of those could not have gone any better. So we still have some of those. I think the majority of those are checked out, but I have a little bit of those left. And then we're also a big place for tax resources. We provide forms for people. We worked with our A A R P group that weren't able to do in-person services this year, but we connected a lot of people to them. And, um, just trying to get people the services that they need. And more. So, um, these are other things we've done during this time. We've done scavenger hunts in downtown businesses. We've done scavenger hunts in the park for summer reading. We've, um, done things like hu, we hung up a backup job for Halloween so families could take Halloween pictures outside. So that's, um, one of our storytime kids in his Black Panther costume that his parents sent us from the Halloween pictures. We've worked with, um, this, in cooperation with the State and Public Library Foundation, we gave out books. We're giving out books monthly at school meal sites as well as the Wolfridge apartment complex. And we've done so much more. And that is the end of what I brought for you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Are there any questions for Jenna? Nice presentation, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Jenna, uh, two things. A, I'm blown away. Like, I knew that you had been doing a lot of cool services, but I'm just blown away. So congratulations for all the effort that you and your team have put together. So that leads me to my second question. How do we, um, give back? What can we do to get, like, can we come down and volunteer some hours? Um, and then I've got some other ideas I'd like to touch base with you outside of, uh, city council to talk about some other things. But what can people do to help?
So, um, right now I can't do volunteers, Chris, but I appreciate the thought about that. But what I can do, what we do need people to do is to talk to their friends and tell them what's happening at the library. We need you guys to be, um, to share our posts and, um, and remember that we're there and let people know that just because library services look a little different right now, doesn't mean that we're not there. And I think that's probably the most important thing that could happen.
Jenna, I have a, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when you talk about posts, just for the, the YouTube, uh, sharing, um, what, what is your guys' YouTube channel called? And, uh, which posts, uh, is it through Facebook, Instagram, uh, what, what kind of platforms?
You can share our Facebook posts, so our Facebook's, um, called, um, Join Us At The State and Public Library. And then the State and Library has a YouTube channel. You can see YouTube videos, they're connected through our website, but we also have a State and Library channel.
Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, that's.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Counselor Ort. Um, I do not have a question, but I just wanna give a kudos to Jenna and her staff. Um, I picked up one of the bistro boxes for last month and my kids loved it. It was an adventure series and they were really excited about Kitty and, uh, it was some sort of treasure hunt. But anyway, um, it's a series and so now they wanna read the rest of it. So, um, they can't read by the, on the, well, they're, they're learning through, uh, early learners. So, uh, we read it together and it's a lot of fun. Um, but I wanted to say thank you for that. And, um, if you haven't gotten one of those or the make and takes, they're lots of fun as well. And thank you for doing that, Jenna.
Okay, thank you. All right, you guys, who knows?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Oh, there we go, go ahead.
Yeah, I just was gonna say, Jenna, very nice job. There was a lot of things here that could serve my kids pretty well that I wasn't even aware of, and I will be sure to spread the word. So thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good. Thank you, Jenna, again, wonderful.
Oh, uh, Mr. Mayor?
You're the best.
Jenna?
Here she comes.
Uh, I, I do have a question. So, um, so I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit. Are we doing like a book sale at the library this year? It's gonna look a little different, right? Is that the intention?
The friends, the, the friends of the library, thanks, Jordan, the friends of the library are doing a drive-through book sale this weekend on Saturday. And I can't think of the hours right now. It's this Saturday. And I can't remember if it's eleven to one or twelve to two, but you're gonna have, sorry, I'm gonna have to get back to you about that. And, uh, they're gonna do it in the community center drive-through, um, the parking lot. So.
Okay.
That'll be.
Is it cash only? Is it cash only? Do they have?
They can do a card, too.
You wanna kind of explain what it is? Cause it's different, right?
Yeah, it is a different, um, it's a, a pre-packed mystery bag for five dollars. So there's some genres to choose from and then, um, it's a five-dollar pre-packed mystery bag is, is pretty much what it is. So they're very excited. It's just, um, it'll be a fun experiment, I think. So, thanks for the reminder.
This Saturday?
This Saturday.
Thanks for getting that out of her, Jordan.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jordan. Oh, Keith is holding up bags. He's got a romance bag and a kiss grab bag, so.
Oh, I'm.
Don't be looking, Keith, it's supposed to be a surprise, don't be looking inside.
All right.
Oh, um, okay, okay, one more question, uh, since you're here, Jenna. Um, a post recently went out about, um, opening up the library sometime when we go to moderate status. Are we anticipating that anytime soon possibly?
So I'm not in charge of when moderate status happens for Marion County, but we did let our, our, uh, community know this morning that, um, we'll be ready to open when that happens. And, um, put some pictures of things that are looking a little different, so it's not quite so, um, surprising when they're back in, cause things will look a little different. And so I kinda want to prepare them for it to be a little different. Um, but we put that out and Jordan, I have no, like, your, your real question about, like, when that changes, I don't have any way to know that. So. Oh, Keith is raising his hand, though.
Okay, let's, let's go. Let's ask the manager.
Yeah, to Counselor Ort's question, I think, uh, what we're looking at is we know we're really close. Uh, we know we're looking at metrics that, that put us right on the cusp. We have a meeting tomorrow with the Marion County Health, uh, Authority, um, where we're hoping to get more information and updates on what the potential status was and the dangerous status. So we know we're really close to that moderate level and we're hopeful and optimistic that's gonna happen sooner rather than later. So hopefully we'll have an update, um, maybe as early as tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Keith. If we're, uh, we got most of the questions from Jenna, uh, let's go ahead with, with your presentation, Keith, on, um, the extension of a collective bargain agreement with A F S C M E Local thirty-two twenty-two.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's a nice segue. Before you is consideration of an approval of a one-year extension with our local Ask Me Union. Uh, the, the current contract we have with our union is set to expire at the end of this fiscal year, which would be June thirtieth. We bargained with them, it was a, I say bargaining in a very loose term, just had a, a nice conversation where the union asked to extend the current agreement we have, everything in place for one additional year. So before you is consideration of extending our current bargaining agreement through June thirtieth to twenty twenty-two, one additional year. The staff recommends to ratify this extension and we're happy to answer any questions. And I will say, we did invite Ask Me here, but they didn't feel like, um, they needed to be here. The representatives were, were asked, we talked to the president today and, and, um, I think he was looking forward to enjoying the nice weather tonight. So, um, it, it went pretty well and, and so that's why we're recommending, uh, this approval.
Keith, I didn't get a chance to ask this earlier, but, uh, it's probably too early to know what this year's COLA is gonna be, isn't it? That's a.
No, I, I don't think so. Um, I'll have Susanna pop in, is it one point six or one point eight, Susanna? And maybe I'm gonna say that and you're gonna come in and say something different.
Okay.
Is she there? Is that there?
She's lying.
A, a quick point there, there she is.
For which, I'm sorry, what was one point six or one point what?
What's, what's the COLA expected, the cost of living expected to be based off the union contract? Do you remember?
It was, it was one point four when I checked it in January and I'll be checking here in the next couple of weeks, cause we're gonna use the March's report. But that's what it was in January.
Okay, I was too high.
You were close.
So, uh, anything else, Keith, before we, uh, go to discussion by the council?
No, just if they have any questions, be happy to answer.
Okay. Questions for Keith on that, uh, union contract, that extension? Anyone? Okay, um, we've got three possibles here. I need a motion to approve? Or did I go too fast again?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Uh, this is Counselor Hook. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with Ask Me Local three, two, 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 extending the collective bargaining agreement through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Second, Counselor Patty.
Uh, Counselor Patty is second. So a motion and a second to approve that memorandum of agreement to, uh, extending the collective bargaining agreement through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion, please? Alyssa, would you poll the council on this, please?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Motion, motion passed at five to zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there anything from city staff, uh, to come to the council tonight?
Actually, yes, uh, the chief's gonna come over here and talk, so just a moment.
Get to slide in on chairs. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council. Just wanted to give you guys an update on our most recent event. Um, I hate saying it that way, but it seems like they just keep coming. But, uh, the tanker event that got some of us up at the crack of dawn. Um, as you can see, Golf Club Road is open. Um, they went through and there's some test sites there and some to make sure the ground's good and we're back open, which is a great thing. I think a lot of us probably were unaware of how much volume of traffic actually comes in through Golf Club until all of a sudden we all had to go somewhere else. And it was like, oh, no, different ways to go. So we were trying to problem solve. Just wanted to let you know, uh, that your police department worked very well with Marion County. It was a great partnership, like we had through the fires and that teamwork that we have together is just getting closer and closer and easier. And, uh, phone calls are, are nice. Um, we had four of our personnel out there for the evacuation of our, uh, citizens in our community that were, were affected by it. Uh, we were able to open up the community center very quickly. Um, we had some resources here to sort of help them. And then with the American Red Cross, they were right here really quick, offered up, uh, locations. Um, hotel motels can be hard to find, uh, open rooms right now and they were able to help us out. So we were able to supply, uh, some of our affected residents with, uh, housing that night also. So it worked very quickly, um, we responded very well. As you know, the driver of that vehicle has now been charged criminally with reckless driving, which is an A misdemeanor. Where that goes to the DA's office, um, we'll keep track of it and see what happens. So I just wanted to let you know, we were there, we were responding, we were working with, uh, all the other agencies. Um, it's great to have Oregon State Police showed up that night with some of their staff to help us with evacuations and traffic issues as well as ODOT. So it was a great team effort by, uh, local, regional assets for law enforcement, so can't be happier. Questions at all?
Geez, I was surprised to find out when it was all over with, that, uh, it was a lot closer to, to the city limits than I thought. I thought the wreck had been out on that long curve by Mill Creek and no, it was way in close here.
Yeah, it was about. Yeah, probably about fifty yards or so before it was in the city. So very close, especially with that new property that's been annexed in, so it was very close. Yeah. Um, I think if it was in the city, the response that we would have received from everybody would have been exactly the same. Marion County would have been here to help us, O S P, and been the same exact response. So, um, just the investigation fell with them.
Thank you, it's good.
You bet.
Other thoughts and questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I just wanna say once again, Chief, thanks again for responding to another tragic event and hopefully we'll cut you loose this summer at some point so you can take another vacation.
We will try, we'll see what happens, so it's okay. That's what I'm here for and I'm, I'm more than happy to do it, thank you very much.
Hi, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, this is Counselor Hook. I just wanted to say a big thank you to you guys as well. It seems like you guys have built amazing partnerships, uh, with other entities and, um, although it, you know, was probably inconvenient having it closed down for, for a lot of us. Um, it seems like you guys did a really great job working together and, and getting it cleaned up and thank you for the update.
You bet. All right.
Anything else, thanks. Keith, okay. And he exits out. And what have we got? Communications from Mayor and Council. I'd like you folks to affirm my appointment of, of Alan Kingsley to, uh, the Budget Committee. Uh, this is a, well, they're all, they're all young people compared to me, but, uh, Alan's been a, I know, almost a lifelong resident here in insurance business with his dad and then in, uh, by himself. And now retired, uh, but a, um, a factor in the community for a long time. So if you folks would, um, I'd like to appoint him to the Budget Committee. You would have my undying thanks.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Eternal, yes.
Uh, Counselor Hook, I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve Alan, your, I don't know how to say this the right way, to approve Alan Kingsley to the, uh, Budget Committee.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second, I'll second.
Thank you, all right. Uh, Alyssa, would you, uh, was, there's any discussion? Would you go ahead and poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
And Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed at five to zero.
Isn't it, we're, we're early, which is wonderful, beautiful evening out here, early April. Um, if there's, if there's no other we can quit, I could announce that, uh, uh, those of you that like to watch, um, macho films, I don't especially, but they're there, um, a six-hour Ken Burns film on, um, Ernest Hemingway, uh, starting tonight at eight o'clock on OPV. So if you're, um, one that likes that sort of thing or around people that do, that's, that's, I just found that in somebody's Oregonian and hadn't read it till tonight. So I'd offer that as something. Is there any more news on, uh, commercial, uh, Gallus Gallus production? We heard about that last meeting.
In the chickens?
Gallus Gallus, yeah, the, the domestic chicken.
So, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, I did a little research this afternoon since I, uh, I, I heard the question might be raised. Uh, what I've learned, uh, from talking to my colleagues in the Lynn County Planning Department is that Lynn County, um, I guess the word is approved, no, it was not a permitting process. Uh, they've approved the construction of twelve, uh, commercial broiler houses, uh, for a location on Jefferson Sciow Drive that is west of Sciow. Um, if you're looking at a map, it's kind of, uh, if you go due west from Sciow and due south from Marion Village and cross the river, it's, it's down that way. So it's, uh, what, six, seven miles southwest of Stateon. Um,
Yeah.
It's in an exclusive farm use zone. It is a farm use, it's a permitted use. There, there was no, uh, process or proceedings at Lynn County. I guess from what, uh, the planner that I spoke with there said, uh, and, and they don't even need building permits for farm buildings like this that are not gonna be occupied by humans. Um, she also reported that they have, the, the owner has applied with the State Department of Agriculture for what's called a C A F O, Confined Animal Feeding Operation Permit or License. And that there will be a public comment period available through the State Department of Agriculture. She did not know when a notice of that would be coming out. That's everything that I can tell you.
Well, we're seeing signs around town of saying no to chicken farming. Um, uh, I saw one this morning down Second Street. And, uh, I just wondered how prevalent, uh, discussion was in the community here. And that's what, that's why I raised the question, we talked about it last time. Counselor Ort, um, uh, knew something about it and, and shared some comments.
Mr. Mayor?
And there she, one of them is, oh, that's Counselor Hook, go ahead.
Yeah, Counselor Hook here, um, you were asking how prevalent, well, there's, um, a group of, uh, farmers, um, in both Lynn and Marion County that are working, uh, together on, uh, that project that has the signs. Um, and they have, uh, I have, I have one in my own yard. Um, and it's, uh, they have a website that is FarmersAgainstPostureFarms.com if people are wanting to, um, know a little bit more about that group, um, and the signs that are going up around town. So, um, there is, there is that information. um, and the signs that are going up around town. So, um, there is, there is that information.
Something of, of, of interest, certainly. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, here, here we go.
Dan, um, so can I, I want to ask a clarifying question for you. So you're saying that, um, there was no permit process for approving the buildings and whatnot, but for the, um, for the confined animal, oh, was it confined animal factory?
Feeding, confined animal feeding operation.
Okay, so confined feeding, confined animal feeding operation. Okay, for that, there, there is a, a process, a permit process?
What I learned this afternoon is that there is a permit process through the Oregon Department of Agriculture. They don't always have a public comment opportunity, but my source in Lynn County Planning told me that in this case, she believes that they intend to do that and there will be forthcoming a notice of opportunity to comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on, on that tonight?
Um, as of, so, uh, I've heard of that one, the one that Dan is talking about that's in Lynn County. As of, um, the one that is on, that is, the rumblings happening on Porter, on the Porter Farm, on Porter Road, that one is, um, like a mile or so out of our city limits. Um, I haven't heard much more on that and where that's going just yet.
Porter Road would be down, probably a couple of miles west.
Okay, it's like a mile and a half, um, down shaft.
Down shaft. Seems like a long mile. Well, anyway, that's, that's fine. Yeah, we'll, we'll hear more as, as there's more to be heard. Uh, anything else to see?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
No.
I had a, um, had a question come in to me, uh, and I'd like to read it. It says, in light of the city parks, uh, or in light of the city wanting to pass the Parks Levy, what is a city doing to help our parks? Um, or, excuse me, what is our city doing to keep our parks safe from homeless people who can live at our parks? Not long ago, the homeless issue was primarily in Portland and Eugene, and now we have a large community living in Salem, just a few exits away from Staton. And I know that this was answered and we talked about this previously, um, but I told this person that I would bring uh, this question to the council. And so just as a, as a refresher, um, because this person had come in contact with some people living down at the river, uh, just recently, and she was, um, concerned with, she had to leave with her children. She was concerned with some behavior happening, so.
Sounds like somebody else that reported a while ago that had, uh, some rude comments directed at her and her children. Is this that same person that, uh, that sent you a, a note or a letter?
Um, no, this is a different person.
Okay. We remember who that other person was, don't we?
Um, well, I, I don't know if it, that happened to me in the park.
Yeah, it was yours.
Yes.
So the same thing is happening to others?
Um, I mean, no, I'm not saying this over again to just say it over again. Um, I'm saying that someone came to me and had an issue and so I'm just bringing it to the, um, to the council because they asked me to.
Does this person have a name?
Um.
Do they live in the community? I mean?
Uh, yes, they live in the community, but they asked me to bring that. I, I am, I am her representative. I'm bringing it forward to the community, to our council as her representative.
What if we insisted that we're gonna bring these anonymous things to the council, but people have names before they're brought here to discuss?
That, that is, we are a representative, we are a representative republic and that is exactly what our job is, is to hear comments from the community and bring them forward and be their voices. So I'm doing exactly what I was voted in to do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, but think of the anonymous things that could, could come here if we, uh, if we are refused to identify ourselves or the people are contacting us. You get anything started with, uh, you know, you could do a chicken little, the sky is falling. Well, who said that? Well, I don't know, somebody.
Um, I mean, that's a, that's a fair point, but I'm going to believe that this person is not just, um, making this up and has concerns if she's a voting member of the community and, and, and wants something to be addressed.
Okay. Would, uh, would she or her representative be upset if, uh, um, we decided not to, uh, listen to those concerns?
What, what's our, what's our job here then? Why are we here if we're not supposed to listen to, uh?
The community has names, Counselor. And if we insist on bringing these anonymous things to the council, um, how do we know that there are members of the community, their, their claims are?
So every time someone brings something to me, I need to, I need to name exactly who they are and where they live and, and how many, how many cars they drive and
How many?
And how they, like, that doesn't make any sense.
Do they have free range chickens that are, that somebody took one? Uh, you know, who is this, who is this person?
I don't. I don't really get what your point is. So.
Mr. Mayor?
I just like, public discussion should be.
This is a public discussion. This is exactly what we're supposed to be doing. What are we here for, Mr. Mayor? If we're not supposed to be talking about things that people bring to us from the community. Are you telling me that just because someone brought something to me and they don't want to be named, that we can't talk about it? That is ridiculous.
Mrs. Jones wanted me to tell you that she had a concern.
Are you also implying that I just made it up? Is that what you're doing? Because I feel like, I, I mean, if you want to go back to it, as being nice early, but if you want to go back to it, like, I feel like the assumption was made that I was making it up because I'm not making it up. So, um, if somebody wants to move this uh, conversation forward, I would like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I, I, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, we, we do have council rules about decorum and, um, uh, all people have, uh, that are a part of the council meeting do have to follow those rules, not just, uh, the counselors. And I will make a point to say that when I just previously talked about a group of farmers, um, that were doing a, a certain website, um, you did not ask me who those farmers were. So I do believe that your comments are, uh, a bit out of line with all due respect, sir.
You, you think anything I say is out of line there, so I'm, I'm fine. I'm, I'm, it's good. Bring these anonymous comments. It's fine. Anything else tonight? Let's go home if there is.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say one thing on that too. I know these other councils are fully capable of defending themselves, but I'm gonna step in and add an initial comment here, and that is that it is our job to make those judgment calls. If citizens bring issues to us, it is our job to make the judgment calls, whether it's something that needs to be brought to the council or not, whether it's someone from outside the community, from inside the community, wants to be anonymous or not. That, we are, we are the filter for their voices. So she, it's Counselor Ort made the decision that that was a valid concern, such, such that, brought to the council. There's no need to require, you know, the lack of anonymity for public comments. That's ridiculous.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Oh, who's waving their hand? Chief, is that you?
Yep, that is me. Do you mind, do you mind, sir, if I say something to the council regarding the question real quick? Okay. This story goes back to what we did probably, I don't know, I lose track of how long ago, but we talked probably about a month or so ago, um, about Boise, about different rules. We also talked about in there very specifically, and this is where you as the council, all of you can help me, help us. A lot of times when we try to tell you what we're, we're at and what we're trying to do is that when you have those citizens call you up to try to give them those instructions. Again, like I said before, if somebody has, if you see something, say something, which is pick up the phone, call us. If we have personnel on and they're free and they're available, we will go talk to people. That's our job as law enforcement. Now, whether or not we're gonna make an arrest, whether or not we're going to make an investigation, whether or not we get there and talk to the complaint and realize we don't have any authority whatsoever to even contact the other resident or citizen or whatever, that's going to be upon us. That's what they need to do. I understand when people feel uncomfortable, but they have to give us the opportunity. So my question back would be, did we act, did we ask these people, when we're talking to us or you, did you call law enforcement? Did they respond? You know, those type of things. Let us at least have the opportunity. And, and I'm, and what I'm fearful of sometimes is that they're not giving us the opportunity to even, let me fail. I'm serious. You know, I mean, I'm gonna make errors. We're gonna do things wrong. It happens. It's, we're human beings. But give us the opportunity and if people are worrisome about calling us, then I can't help. So please, if you would, when they reach out to you, please tell them to call their local law enforcement, no matter where they're at. I don't care if they're here, different parts of the county, up the canyon, Silverton, call. That's, we, we all took an oath in law enforcement to do our best that we can for everybody. So these issues and stuff, sometimes it just takes sometimes a conversation with them to, to, to understand everything. Uh, sometimes these aren't the best form for that kind of thing. Sometimes they are. Um, but if you could help me uh, in my, in our staff, your, your police officers, please spread the wealth, spread the knowledge, um, let us try to at least have some type of an effect on those situations if you can. Uh, it'd be greatly appreciated. We're never gonna walk away from something. We're at least gonna go try to find out the best and deal with that situation the best that we can. As I've talked about the homeless and how we respond to it and how I'd like to see, you know, our community members respond to us. So I just wanted to get in there and just say that, just again, one more time to help me be, be an advocate for us. That, that's a wonderful thing, Counsel. You guys pull a lot of, have a lot of weight and a lot of people listen to you far sometimes more than us in, in uniform and our expertise because you are in that elected role, but you gotta help us. You know what I mean? So I just, if you would, it'd be greatly appreciated. So I'm sorry to get on my soapbox a little bit there, but I wanted to make.
No, I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, Counselor Ort, before he pops off real fast, um, I just have a question. Can, can people call in anonymously for a tip? Is that something that you guys allow?
Yeah, we do it all the time. Now, we may not make contact with that person and if they see that, well, the cops didn't do anything, it's because we didn't have a complaint and so you have to be part, sometimes you have to be part of the solution. Um, but we will still take in, information and move forward. Um, and some of those things we won't, given, uh, the circumstances. So. But we'll, we'll make that judgment.
I just wanted to comment, that's exactly what I, that's exactly what I was hoping would happen when I read this, was that just a reiteration of what do we need to do? How can we handle the situation? I did go over the Boise issue. I went over, you know, there, you know, the, the, um, the roadblocks that we've run into, the things that we can and can't do. Um, and then I told her if something is, is happening, like to, to call the police, and she did. So I'm not saying that you didn't do anything. That's not what I was implying either. Um, and I, but I, I brought it up because she asked me to, and this is the conversation that I was hoping that we could have because I feel like we have to continually have the conversation so that more people can hear it. Thank you.
Counselor, I didn't take it that you didn't think we didn't do anything whatsoever in your comment. I mean, I just want to reiterate those things that a lot of times there's a lot of information out there and, you know, what we do in law enforcement sometimes is sort of a mystery. And I mean, um, and the reason it's a mystery sometimes is that you guys, we're the ones that go out there and deal with situations that you guys don't want to see or have to deal with, you know? Um, that's what we do. Um, and that's, that's okay. Uh, so I didn't take it at all that way.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. All right. We ready to give it up for tonight? A beautiful evening out there.
Mr. Mayor, I just had one more thing.
Okay.
The pop-up sale is from 10 to 2 on Saturday for the books.
For books, out, outside the community?
Excuse me, 11 to 2. Did I say 11 to 2?
It's 11 to 2. I was too, Jordan. Thank you.
Okay, all right. That it? Let's go home. Thank you, folks. Have a good one.